The resolution is on the consent agenda. So if anybody would like to have discussion on that item before we vote, it would need to be removed from consent agenda and handled as a regular item of discussion. If people are prepared and have had their questions answered, then it could stay on consent. So does anybody have a perspective or opinion? Does no opinion mean that you're ready to vote on consent? Or does it mean that -- Councilor Lindvile?
I guess I would suggest that it just come off, just in case. I mean, then it allows for us to have discussion anytime if we would like to.
So any counselor can make a motion in the meeting to remove that item from consent. And we normally do that. Do we need a vote motion to do that? Or we just need a request from a council?
We just need a request.
Okay, all right. So just a request would cause it to be removed from consent and then dealt with as new business? Is that right? Okay. So we can do that if people would like to have a chance to say a few words or ask a question or two. That would be fine. Any other questions that might pertain to agenda? Any counselor concerns? Counselor West?
I called Brian today and Gina and Kristen, Counselor Akval. I met with the neighbors of Meadows at Starbucks this week and their concerns about the parking issue that they petitioned us on a number of times the last few meetings. And I think there's some new information and some recent activity that's happened. And I'd like us to be able to -- I know we have a packed work session, it looks like, but maybe we could talk about it in the -- get an update and have a chance as a council to kind of talk about moving forward plans, options, and meet the next meeting and the council meeting.
So would that imply something from staff today? Or just asking that we get to it next meeting?
So if there are folks from the neighborhood that are here and want to certainly provide public comment at the council meeting, they can do so tonight. I'm prepared tonight under City Manager's Business. I can give you an update on what's been done and kind of let you know what's occurring out there. And hopefully address some of the questions and maybe concerns that the residents have.
All right. And so then that would get us in a position to decide whether there needs to be an item next meeting?
Yeah. Depending upon what comes out of that. If there's any other, you know, information that you all need as a city council or things that you'd like staff to follow up on, we can certainly do that. But I can give you an update under City Manager's Business. We'll just go from there.
Okay. It is my understanding that we probably won't have a lot of public comment on it tonight. I don't know for sure. But I think there is plans for the next council meeting on the floor there to be more additional neighbors coming out and giving us public comment on it, from what I can tell. And I think that, looking at it, some neighbors want this to happen and other ones want this to happen. So it's not all uniform either in the request. And so trying to find that happy medium to make sure we're doing the right thing, I think it's a good thing to kind of get caught up to speed on, so.
Okay. All right. Sounds like that'll work then? Okay. Anything else? Other concerns? I'm still hoping our paving gets done before the weather is completely --
Our painting.
The striping on the paving, anyway. The paving is mostly done. All right. Why don't we jump into our scheduled work session items then, starting with our water rate discussion, Ms. Rodocker and friends? Need to light up your mics here, if you would.
Good evening. Kathy Rodocker, Finance Director. And I have with us Doug Gabbard from FCS. Unfortunately Wyatt got stuck in a major traffic jam coming down from Seattle, so he will not be able to join us this evening. So we have a short presentation. We're not going to spend a lot of time going over information that has been presented previously, but really focus on both the rate structure that we recommended last time, as well as coming up with a new rate structure based on the information and the feedback that we got from council at the last meeting. So if that works for you.
It does, as long as we do not take the whole time in presentation and council has a chance to discuss.
Correct. We figure about 10 minutes.
Okay, good.
And, you know, we're hoping to get some further concrete direction from council this evening.
So, understanding the time counts, I have two main things I want to share with you tonight, and I wanted to see if you want to take one of them more urgently. I left here last time, understanding that we went from a cost of service allocation that I think you understood very well, and then we went directly from this to a rate schedule, which was like slamming it into fifth gear from a stop sign. I am prepared tonight to show you a series of excruciatingly detailed slides that will get you from this to the rates that we recommended. However, I also have for you an alternative rate schedule that you might find more attractive because it is based upon a uniform base charge by meter size. And as you may recall from our last time together, that was a major source of consternation. So in the interest of time, I would be happy to move directly to the uniform base charge, but I would also be happy to take you through the original rates that we showed you.
Anybody need to see the same thing again, the data that led to the original recommendation? You want to see the additional stuff? Counselor Akval?
I don't want to see the same thing again, but I do want to see some of those breadcrumbs that we were looking for.
All right.
If we can move through it quickly, I think that'll help us have a more fruitful discussion when we're talking about the other.
That's totally fair. Okay. So I will initially go fairly quickly and you slow me down when you want to. Okay.
As we're talking about alternatives here.
Yes.
I wrote late this afternoon to staff and pointed out that at the Legal Cities Conference, there was a presentation by Tim Tice of the Oregon Association of Water Utilities. I don't know if anybody else went to that session. And they were talking about how to allocate equitable water rates. And I did not come away with enough detail to present what they were presenting, but I did ask the question of, you know, whether that organization, which seems to be reasonably robust in Oregon, has a methodology that would be a different approach than we're being presented.
I did reach out and talk to them, but after a five-minute conversation, I really don't feel like I have enough information to address. Everything, they, you know, they specialize on rate structures for smaller communities, 10,000 customers or less. They do put a heavier emphasis on base rates, just because on these smaller jurisdictions, they need to make sure that their monthly, you know, bills are being paid. And they did have some different philosophies on customer types and things of that sort. But I, you know, I don't feel like I can explain thoroughly what their point is. And if that is something that you want us to look into, then we would need to, you know, set up time to meet with them.
All right. So let's hear what we have tonight, then. And we'll have to -- yeah.
So this is where we left you the last time that everyone was still on board. What we have to go from this point is every dollar in each of those fields of that matrix needs to get put into some rate component. It either needs to be in a base charge or in the volume charge. And when we say base charge, that's actually one of two things. It could be a customer-related charge that's charged by account. It's the same for all accounts. Or a meter charge based upon the flow capacity of the meter. So the customer charge and the meter charge together make up the base charge, and then there's a volumetric charge. And everything I'm about to show you is about putting each one of those numbers into one of those categories. So on the right side of this chart, you see the different functions that were across the top of what I showed you, the table I just showed you. On the left side are the different components of the rate, either the account charge, the meter charge, or the volume charge. You see, the peak costs uniquely, there is some freedom in how you allocate it, and that gave rise to some conversation that Kathy and I had earlier today. Okay. So this is what you -- this was what went into the rates we showed you last time. You'll notice, this is by class. At the top, commercial, commercial total, $691,000. If we go back to the original cost of service table, that is a little bit between your current revenue versus the cost of service revenue, because there's an implementation schedule that we're using that I showed, that was in an earlier slide. But you'd be able to trace that number back to that. So we're saying that we have costs in each of these four functions. And notice that they map one-for-one to a rate component along the left side. 100% of the customer costs go into the account charge. 100% of the meters and services costs go to the meter charge. 100% of the base use go to the volume charge. 100% of the peak costs go to the meter charge. The choice of the peak charge represents more of a policy-driven choice. That's part of the art of rate design, as opposed to the science that got us to this point. So you'll notice that for commercial and industrial, 100% of peak goes to the meter charge, because that is what creates the need, the capacity to use extra water, is what creates the need for you to build more, and you're going to have to finance that usually. And so putting that in a meter charge helps you pay the debt service. But that's a policy choice, and you're going to see, you're going to see how we choose differently for other classes in a minute. But that's how those numbers get into those rate components for those classes. So far, so good?
No.
Okay.
You lost me somewhere in there. 100% of the peak charge goes into the volume?
Of the peak cost. So, looking back to here, for commercial, the total peak capacity costs are 211, 223. You see that?
Yeah.
Okay. Now, here it's going to be slightly different because of the implementation schedule. Here it's 205, 113. But it comes, it comes from that cell essentially. And we're saying that when you have costs related to peak capacity for these customer classes, we're putting 100% of that charge into the meter charge.
So I need to understand better. If you've got a one-inch meter, its flow capability is based on that pipe diameter and the pressure that it's running at, right?
That's right, sir. Yes.
So what is a peak charge for?
Well, peak is a category of costs.
You're losing me again.
Okay. I may not be able to get you back in the time that I have allotted.
We may not be able to decide until we understand.
That's fine. That's fine. But that $211,000 for peak costs, we're allocating for these classes, for industrial and commercial, 100% to meter, as opposed to what you'll see in a moment. But once we have those allocated, we have a numerator, we add up the number of customers for each class and the number of meter capacity equivalents for each class, and those give us denominators. So then we do the division. So here for the commercial class, we add up the account-related charges of 19968, and we divide by 344. And that's a monthly unit cost of $4.84. We do the same thing for the meter charges. However, for meter, that will escalate by meter capacity, and the account charge will be the same for all accounts. They will be combined together to form the base charge. But within that base charge, those two elements are working. Industrial's done the same way.
So what is cost allocated? It sounds like a policy choice.
I'm not sure I follow you.
What components are in cost allocated?
She doesn't want included in that. Are you asking what's included in that?
Your line of cost allocated in commercials is 199, and when in industrial is 5?
Oh, thank you. Thank you, yes.
Why are those different by?
Okay. So look, okay, look up here. Commercial, total account charge is 19968, right? That's that 19968.
Okay. Why is it that different than industrial?
Because these costs were, first of all, the function was identified based upon your budget, based upon your current assets. And then it was allocated to the class based on the characteristics of each of those classes.
Each of those --
I'm going to have to have more time to discuss this than you've got, because I just don't follow the logic on some of this.
This might be something to be a right-hand list of examples. Yeah, we have that in presentation. Well, should we go on to the next rate structure?
I want to see what happens to residential. I think it's not going to be 100%, right?
Okay. So unit costs, okay, volume charge, non-residential, this is the same arithmetic. Total volume charge, but before we can, before we can settle on a volume charge, we have this thing of an allowance to back out. And so that's what's in the left column. And then what's left gets allocated to the monthly cost, the unit cost per CCF on the right.
And that's the two units that we include in all the base fees.
Is that the allowance?
Yes.
Okay. Got it.
But that's the numerator, same arithmetic for the denominator. You add up and divide, and here is your rates for the non-residential, commercial, industrial. That's, this is the, this is the rate schedule. Okay. Now, same process, different classes, residential and irrigation. The difference you'll notice here is that for peak costs, we're at 75% to volume, 25% to meter for residential, 100% to volume for irrigation. These are, these are policy-driven, policy-driven may not be the right word. These percentages were chosen to get you as close as possible to your current rate structure. Because we're in rate design, we've already figured out the cost of service. That was that big table with functions and classes. Now we're doing rate design, which allows for a little more freedom. And for, for peak usage in particular, putting more, more of that cost in the volumetric rate creates more of the conservation incentive we think you were looking for. But it's not without its own risks, I should add. But, but there it is. Now, if the question is, can we do it differently? Absolutely, we can do it differently. If, if this was the result of art, we could do it as artfully another way. So that's changeable. But as it is right now, here's our denominator with number of customers, number of meter capacity equivalents. We add them up, we do the division. Again, this is just like you saw before. We divide out the account charge and the meter charge, which will get combined to form the full base charge. And now the volume charge after backing out your two CCF allowance. So here's your residential block volume charge, $3.16 for the first block, $6.13 per CCF for block two. And the rate schedule for those two classes. So this is, this is what we showed you before, although we have, we have taken out non-feasible rates toward the bottom, where the meter sizes were not relevant for that class, just to avoid any confusion. But this is what we showed you, and what we have just gone through rather quickly is the math that gets you from the cost of service allocations to the rates. I do want to show you a --
Do you have a question?
Can I?
Yeah.
Quickly, okay. So I think what I am understanding then is that the previous, the new graphs that we just saw, charts, tables that we saw today, that isn't essentially, that's the formula that gave us these products.
That's right. This is, all of this has been an explanation.
And it's weighted differently based on industrial or commercial. And that 100% in the different, I'm not going to be able to come up with the columns now. Yes, this base, peak, customer, that is what creates kind of our products on the end table to be, it's not, it's not the same. One inch isn't the same. And that's because of what we're seeing here, because it's weighted differently, right? Am I, am I getting it? I just need a little confirmation that I think I'll be there. Okay?
Now, there's not, I don't want to, I don't want to overstate the degrees of freedom. It is, it is in the peak usage where a lot of the, the rate component assignment is not obvious. You know, it is obvious that customer-related costs are going to be charged to the account. It is obvious that meters and services is going to be charged to the meter. It is fairly obvious that your base usage is going to be, or, or base water costs are going to be charged to the volumetric rate. There's, there is this more freedom with the peak. And furthermore, peak charges only account for, you know, the 3 million of the 8 million. So it's, we're practicing our art with a, with a fraction of a fraction, where most of these costs are fairly obvious where they go. But with that freedom, you can still affect your, your rates. Now, we have gone so far as to ignore some of those rules in presenting you with an alternative rate structure. Should I move on to that, or have I left any itch unscratched?
Well, what you're saying as far as, I guess, the art to it, some of that nuance that we're manipulating or performing is, it's happening more in the residential and in the landscape one. Correct? And that's where we're trying to make more efforts in the conservation. Is that correct?
That's what you're saying.
Yeah. Okay.
More peak, more peak charges are in the volume, where of course it makes sense that 100% for irrigation is in the peak charges because, you know, is in the volume, because that's all pretty much driving the peaks.
I can promise you for whatever it's worth that none of what we're doing here, none of the freedoms we're exercising here are outside the bounds of the M1 manual, which is what is produced by the American Waterworks Association. It's the standard for which rate studies are done, for full cost of service studies. So this is, we are still within the industry standard here. But when we go to calculate an alternative, we're going to, we're going to relax some of these cost of service notions a little bit. So what you have here is your total revenue requirement for all classes. Now, you don't see any class distinctions here. This top row looks very much like the bottom row of that cost allocation table, adding up to $8 million. We're going to allocate this whole thing at once, customer costs to account, meters and services to meter, 100% of base to volume, and the allocation that we use for residential for all of peak, regardless of class. That's the difference here. We're going to, we're going to add up the customers and meter capacity equivalents for the entire customer base. And we're going to come up with an account charge and a meter charge for all classes. And now we have a base rate for all classes, summing up the account charge and meter charge. We have a base charge for all customers. So when we were here last time, it sure sounded to me like this is, this was what some of you were hoping for was, or at least it seemed difficult to explain different base charges by class. And so here, we have a common base charge. But we are still doing cost of service. And so what we want to do is we want to take those, those cost of service allocations, and now we're going to, we're going to make them, we're going to make them come out in the volume charge. So we're going to take the cost of service differences between class, and we're going to put it totally into the volume charge. And so that's what this table is about. And when you do that, you end up with a residential charge of 312 and 587, based on block or tier, the multifamily charge of 328, 329 for commercial, and so on. So all of the cost of service is still preserved, but it's all put into the volume charge. That's why your volume charges are different by class. So here is what the alternative rate structure looks like. Everybody's paying the same base rate by meter size, and the differences for cost of service show up in the volumetric charges.
So I'm looking at this little chart on here. It would appear we have no eight-inch things.
Somebody might want one. Somebody might want one at some point.
And we have only one 10-inch, and that's us.
No, that's the prison. Coffee crate.
So some of these may be hypothetical.
And it could have been that sometimes someone had an eight-inch and then no longer using it.
There's only three six-inch.
Yeah. The majority of our number of customers, of course, are in the 5'8" residential.
Clearly. This happened to reflect most of what we --
So if we, now, now setting aside the original, the original recommendation, if we were comparing what I just showed you in the middle column versus what you currently have in the existing column, that's how they compare. Not too, not too different.
Counselor Lindvile?
I have a, my question really is, I thought that in the previous discussion, that the commercial and industrial were not paying, they were being charged at a lower, they were, they were assuming the lower part of the percentage of the costs, and they were higher, the residential was being charged for more of the consumption, and that was part of the inequity. Was that not correct?
That is, that is my understanding.
Okay. So in this chart, in the existing, in commercial and industrial, those rates actually for commercial goes down. Why?
I will have to get back to you on that.
Residential also goes down, tier one.
Correct. And residential was paying a higher percentage than, based on our last cost of service analysis, than on this cost of service analysis, so.
So everybody can't go down. Somebody's got to go up.
Irrigation's going up.
Irrigation is going up, tier two's going up. And of course, the base fees are, are going up somewhat. You know, the 10-inch meter is going up about $500 a month. But like you said, we only have one of those, so.
Counselor West?
This is a dense topic. And I had, my question is similar to Counselor Lindvile's, is that, I think the council expressed a concern, I know I did, that it didn't, I know we can't probably have it all line up perfectly, but there seemed to be a lack of equity with how people paid their rates. And I know as a council, that concerned us. And I remember saying, I don't understand how people that make, I don't know how much thing, but they tend to be on a lower socioeconomic status and live in apartments and multifamily. And now we know multifamily, we do know after our reading also includes the skilled nursing facilities and the retirement community. And concerned how that vulnerable population seems to not be, be carrying a large portion percentage-wise of the bill. And for me, and so this gets a little wonky and heady, and it's hard to do in a short amount of time, but I'm, I'm wondering if it was your goal to find out a way that was economically sound, that worked within the guidelines, while also keeping to being very equitable and a house. keeping to being very equitable in how it was done and making sure that vulnerable populations were taken care of and not being gouged by rates. So, that's still kind of my concern, because I don't really know if we've achieved that.
So, uh, and I know we have talked about this before and at some angles, um, the equity question does not enter into this computationally. This is about who, who is creating a burden on the utility, for lack of a better word, and can we, can we recover the costs from those that, that create this burden? That, that is, that is the kind of equity we're looking for, as opposed to who's, who's more able to pay. That, that is really antithetical to cost of service ratemaking. So, so that does not enter into these computations, either one of these.
Am I understanding you correctly that the way that, maybe it's property type or how the properties are built, that people that live in multifamily apartment buildings have a stronger burden on the system than, um, people in single-family homes, in large single-family homes? Am I understanding that correctly?
Well, certainly, a multifamily building, uh, certainly has more use than a single-family structure. Realize, remember this, that multifamily housing is not charged by the unit, it's charged by the building, so they typically have a higher meter size, it, it can be difficult to make an apples-to-apples comparison.
As it does turn out in this particular version of the rate, uh, structure, the multifamily per unit rate is decreasing by forty-two cents a unit. So, there would be, because based on their usage and their impact on the system, it is just naturally coming, going to be lower next, if this was the-
And when she says unit, when she says unit, she's referring to CCF, units of water.
Okay.
When I was saying unit a moment ago, I was talking about dwelling units.
What, what's the difference between residential tier one and residential two tier, two, what are those, what's the differentiation between those two?
So, residential tier one will be for units consumed between three units and eight units-
Okay.
-which is our system average. And then, um, the tier two is for anything over eight units. So, it's basically your irrigation. It's, I mean, it can, it will vary, we have some houses with very large families that will hit that second tier, but for the most, the majority of our customers, um, ninety-four percent of our residential customers have a winter average of eight units or less.
That's right, yeah.
So, although we did not plan it this way, uh, it just happens that if someone, if you have a household, a single-family household with low water usage, they come out pretty well on this particular rate structure. Counselor Lindvile?
It's, just a quick question on the previous one, the, the previous one, uh, the lowest at the five-eight, is that what it is, at five-eight inch? It was at nineteen dollars?
Nineteen, nineteen eighty-one.
Rather than tw- so, they actually are better off, the majority of the customers in the city of Wilsonville, when the highest number would fare better in the other model than in this model, is that correct?
Not necessarily, because while, uh, while the base charge, okay, I'm, so I'm reading off of what, what is slide twenty-two, if you have an independent way to look at it. The residential base charge for five-eights by three-quarters meters in the original recommended rates, the base charge was nineteen dollars and eighty-one cents, to your point. The, the consumption charges were three dollars and sixteen cents for tier one, uh, but six dollars and thirteen cents for tier two. So, so for, um, for a lower usage, I mean, it's still, it is still better than it is today, but the, the one that we just, um, they're very similar. You shifted a little bit between, between base and volume, but, um-
In the aggregate, they're not that far off.
That's right.
Correct.
All right, we've used our thirty minutes.
Okay.
What do we want to do? I had hoped to see the other methodology as an alternative way of looking at things. I, we don't know enough to know what that would amount to. I think that this is interesting, but it's really hard to try to put it side by side with the other one and say, well, this or this, which is kind of what Counselor Lindvile's last question amounted to, you know, I mean, if you do this or if you do that. So, um, can staff provide us a way to look at them side by side and add that other, or check that other methodology, or is that a huge task to look at that other methodology?
Yeah, I-
We don't know until we get more information, right?
Yeah.
Well, and we can, I mean, we can talk to them to get some additional information on what their methodology is, as Kathy mentioned, we only had a few minutes today, you know, after we'd kind of received the email and made contact with them to do any kind of analysis, without going into a whole lot of, you know, we don't want to go through and do a-
Right, right.
An entire study, right? But I certainly think we can probably bring you back some additional information that might be helpful to you at, at a higher level.
I'm seeing some nodding, some nodding heads, you know, anything else? Counselor Lin, uh, Eckerwald?
I think, um, so, um, Counselor Lindvile's question of, okay, I'm remembering it was nineteen point, you know-
Yeah, this is kind of shocking.
Because now we have essentially, we've been presented two models here, if we had one table with, with like, you know, a column for each model-
That's, that's what this one is.
So, we can see who is being, yeah, there we go.
So, here's existing, here's with this, this same base-
Okay.
And here's with a variable base.
Exactly.
So, you can see, okay, well, it goes from twenty forty-five, it's five cents lower here, it goes even lower there, however, the, um, the consumption rates are changing-
Right.
-but they're both lower than what we're, we have today.
So, like, just, this is a great slide for me, because now, you know, we've been talking about multifamily, and, um, Counselor West, is your question's about multifamily look in this one, the variable base-
Yeah.
-right? We see that there's, here are some differences really start to illuminate.
Correct, right.
Um, and so, this is helpful for me, and this would be, I would think, my starting point for our next discussion.
Agree, yeah.
And then also a bit of summary, um, because I understand too, we expose ourselves to some vulnerabilities, right? Depending on where the money is guaranteed to be coming in from, and where the money is dependent on behaviors of people in the city.
Yes.
And so, I think a quick review of, of what those are, um, because we should at least just have that information when we're making our decisions, too.
We need to know expected outcomes.
Yeah, well, we can't always expect to know what people are gonna do.
Yeah, but we can base it on-
Yeah, to kind of calculate.
We, we have a lot of-
We're the expert.
Different data that we can, I think we could come up with that.
And I know we've talked about some of that, but that, that would be, uh, helpful for me to, to have that recapped in summary form again.
So, I think I'm hearing some consensus from council that they would like some more particular types of information, and if you folks have noted that, then that would help us, you know-
Okay.
-do better next time.
Try to figure out what we would expect to receive on a monthly basis with a base rate of, of this rate versus that structure.
Counselor Leahen?
Well, I, I would be interested in, um, in the higher level, because this is awfully weedy for me, but, um, but at the goal level, um, my interest is in incentivizing, uh, conservation. So, how do we incentivize conservation without penalizing people for, you know, flushing the toilet? But, um, but to empower people to keep, to get their bills down by taking these steps. You know, Wilsonville was extremely aggressive in this when we were out of water, um, with, giving people regulators and metering things and, and changing out toilets for people and, and here's ten ways you can reduce your water usage, um, don't, you know, we were very aggressive. I don't know where we are right now compared to where we were then, so what's the average single-family household using compared to then? Are we creeping up every year? Are we-
Per capita economy.
It, it's going down.
And, and, and how do we continue to do that? I know as you get better appliances, better fixtures, um, you have more water savings, certainly laundry is a big user, and those have improved a lot. So, um, uh, but anyway, I, I, I would be looking for, you know, something that's pretty equitable, but has incentives built in, especially in our peak months, um, which is the summer, which, which goes right at irrigation, because that's what drives our capital costs, is we have to build a system for that peak day. And, um, and if we don't have that high of a peak day, then our capital costs go down.
A lot of that has been, has been addressed as far as the, um, commercial rates are based on water usage. So, if you don't have a separate irrigation meter, you're paying sewer rates on water that you're using to water outdoors. And so, a lot of our customers have realized that it's advantageous to go to an irrigation meter where they're only, where, yeah, they're paying a higher rate, but they're not getting charged a higher rate based on your sewer rates. So, we, we have seen, you know, a lot of that migration over the last several years, where people are using the irrigation, so when we come up with an irrigation structure where, you know, that tier rate is higher, then I think that's where you get that conservation. But I can certainly pull, I have, I think, the year-over-year data for residential's for the last ten years or something like that, so it's kind of interesting to see the changes.
It would be interesting to know where we are compared to where we were, and also where we are compared to other comparable cities in terms of per capita, especially on the residential. Now, industrial and commercial kind of depends on the business, obviously Coca-Cola's a big user, and we can't ask them to use less because that would mean they'd have to reduce their production.
Yes. Double-edged sword.
But they are very aggressive, Coca-Cola is very aggressive, I've had conversations with them about, uh, water that they use in the processing and the cleaning and the, and the changing and stuff like that, how much they recycle of that kind of water. But, um, but it, it, every business or industry, depending on what their product is, is gonna be different.
Okay. So, we need to move along, we're ten minutes over. Are the questions things that we can come back to when they bring the other information back to us?
I just have one question that I hope we could answer when we come back. It appears that, and this is, this goes to Counselor Leahen's question a little bit, it appears in the second model that there is no tier for multifamily where there is in the, in the other two and the existing, and so, so in terms of conservation, there's no incentive in that model. So, maybe when we talk about them side by side, we could talk also about that.
All, all the tiers are residential only, single-family only, those, that is the only class with tiers?
Not, not in the, not in the cost of service same base, not, not in those, the existing and the first one proposed, uh, the, the new one proposed.
Right, the residential's the only one that has a tiered rate, everything else is based on their customer type. So, it doesn't matter if they use twenty-five or a hundred and twenty-five, they would all be charged at the same rate.
Right, okay. All right, well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
We'll get to this eventually.
Yep.
Before I retire.
All right, uh, let's jump into Equitable Housing Strategic Plan if we can.
Hello? Good evening, uh, I am Kimberly Rybold, a senior planner with the city, and with me tonight I have Deb Mahoff of Commutitas, one of our project consultants. Very quickly, we're just going to give you an update on where the project is, and then save the bulk of the agenda time for discussion on strategies, as that is really the key piece of feedback that we need tonight moving forward in our project. So, just to ground everyone, uh, when we were last here before the council in early August, we were in the market research phase of the process, and we talked a little bit about what a framework for potential strategies might look like. So, we talked a little bit about people-focused strategies versus building-focused strategies, and we carried that concept forward into our stakeholder outreach. Since we were here, we've done a number of interviews and focus groups, uh, we've had a survey up on the Let's Talk Wilsonville website, and we also had our next task force meeting and a planning commission work session on this topic. Those were a couple of key meetings where we did, uh, start scratching the surface on strategies, and we included the feedback from those two meetings within your packet as attachment three. So, as I mentioned, uh, our key takeaway from tonight really is now in the policy prioritization part of this project. So, we have included a list, both of the original menu that went, uh, to the task force and planning commission, as well as a refined list based on that feedback we got, and Deb will get into that a little more, um, once we get to the discussion piece of this. So, just as, uh, looking forward where we are, we take, we'll take the feedback we hear from you tonight, as well as some additional targeted outreach that we're going to be doing, based on groups that we didn't feel like we heard enough from, particularly renters, um, lower-income renters, uh, in our survey. And with that, we'll pull that all together in a draft plan that will go forward to the task force and planning commission, uh, end of this year into early next year, and we will be back, um, before you all in early 2020 to report back on that. So, with that, I'm going to turn it over to Deb to, uh, lead the discussion tonight.
Great, hi, thank you. So, you've seen these a couple of times, uh, and through the feedback we got from you, um, I think it was at your last meeting, maybe it was a previous one to that, um, and also through our stakeholder outreach, we've, uh, adjusted the policy objectives just a little bit to reflect, um, to reflect those. So, the first thing we did was combine, um, two, uh, policy objectives that were really similar in nature, they were getting at, um, the greater availability of diversity of housing types and a diversity of price points to serve the community, excuse me, and that's for people living here, wanting to live here, um, employees who, who work here and may want to live here. So, just looking at diversity of housing types, price point, so we combined those. And then, uh, the other thing we did, we heard, uh, pretty clearly from some of our stakeholder, um, engagement, especially the task force, that there was a suggestion to add a policy objective that's very explicit, um, about the connection to equity, so that doesn't get lost over time. So, uh, we've recommended a, added a policy objective here, the implementation of all housing policies through a lens of social equity inclusion, so that's sort of, as you're moving through your Equitable Housing Strategic Plan and implementing it, sort of making sure you're checking back in, um, with your social equity goals and inclusion goals. And again, these, we'll talk a little bit more in a minute, but these will be used to start forming what are those measures you might be looking at over time to get a sense whether you're making progress on your, on your plan here. Any questions about the adjustments made to the policy objectives?
Counselor Lindvile?
Um, I, I, I apologize for arriving into this discussion a little bit later than, um, my colleagues, um, but as I went back and looked, um, the, the goal of the project, I think, was to identify specific housing gaps that exist within Wilsonville, and then a list of policy strategies. Were the housing gaps already identified, and have they been defined and distributed to the council?
Yes, um, that was the August, the last work session, we, um, had a market research report, uh, we do have that linked on the project webpage, and we're happy to send you a copy of that as well. Essentially, the takeaway from that was that, um, we have, we have a fairly balanced mix of housing here, more so than some other communities in the region. It was recommended that maintaining that mix of balance, or that balance of housing going forward should be what we strive to do in terms of housing type. We, we did note some demographic changes that will affect us going forward, particularly different age groups that might be living here, as well as, you know, just general flexibility in housing going forward.
Thank you.
Can I just add? I'm, I'm sure staff would be also willing to sit down and chat with you and give you some additional information, you know, answering any kind of questions, because it, it is pretty meaty. Absolutely, it's a lot of information to chat.
Obviously, that's drive, gonna drive the strategies, is what the gaps are, and so, it's, that was the-
And so that was the piece that I was missing.
Okay. So that was actually a perfect segue too to sort of thinking about the strategies. And we've been using the market report. It was a huge part of identifying those gaps. But the stakeholder outreach and engagement we've been having is also, in many cases, sort of verified what we're seeing in the data. And then also just brought some more stories of people living in your community and some of the struggles they're having at finding housing or staying in secured housing. So we've been thinking about that as well. So our outreach is deep in the understanding of the gaps that the data was showing. And then, as Kim mentioned, the sort of laundry list of ideas that were, you know, pretty good ideas at getting at some of these gaps were taken to the task force and to your planning commission to get their expert advice on what seems like the best strategic moves in the near term to sort of start filling these gaps, if you will, or addressing these issues with housing and finding a more equitable housing or making sure you maintain your equitable housing into the future. So I think this is an attachment two of your packet. This is just a summary of the strategies that rose to the top from those conversations with the Equitable Housing Task Force and the Planning Commission. They've been broken up into two general categories. One is tools for near-term implementation. These are pretty clear-cut. The tools requiring further exploration were ideas that, they're all three up there, quite complex in sort of understanding what impacts they would have on the gaps you have in your housing system and what impacts they would have fiscally and policy-wise and all those other things. But they were also ideas that some of the stakeholders thought might be worth digging into a little bit further, suspecting that there could be pretty significant impacts to the positive if you could sort through some of those complexities. So they're not being forwarded with, you should go do this. It's more of a, you should look into this and see if you could get there from here, given your resources and capacity.
Wouldn't tools requiring further exploration, if you have their reduced parking requirements, wouldn't one of them need to be also structured parking?
That could be a part of the discussion. That's really going to be driven a lot on development type, I think. So if you're looking.
They are the flip side. You can't, it's hard to talk about the one as a possibility without talking about the other as a possibility because it's the parking requirements that are driving a lot of the land costs. And you could say, okay, you don't have to have any parking for this building, or you could provide structured parking or require structured parking or something, particularly in a place like Town Center if we're talking about it for retail as well.
And I think that would be a part of the discussion when that happens. And there's certainly, because that gets into funding mechanisms too because there's more inherent cost.
That's why I would put it over there, requiring further exploration. Would be structured parking.
I wonder if we could rephrase that parking requirements to something about reviewing all parking requirements or rather than just reduce. So it sort of captured this idea of the whole system and make sure we're not missing those opportunities.
Yeah. There's a whole bunch of things.
Fair enough. Some of these words really matter.
Under the further exploration, the third bullet, I see in the staff report you've assigned numbers to them and that would be 2C under that definition. There are several things that I'm not sure are being thought about there that I think should be thought about there. One is whether there are elements of our codes that inhibit or make more expensive to do housing. You know, one of them that comes to mind is our 35-foot standard maximum height and whether having a higher standard would allow another floor or allow, you know, some further deferral of costs, you know, by being able to build more units. Another one that I've heard discussed outside the city, and I'm not sure if anyone has gone there, is the idea that SDCs should be proportionate to the size of the dwelling unit. Therefore, a 5,000-foot house would have a different SDC setup than a 1,000-foot, you know, something or other. So how would that work and what problems does it cause? Or what solutions does it bring to the table? Those kinds of things, you know, make me start thinking about what elements in our code are stumbling blocks or difficulties that might be streamlined in some way to make it more attractive. And that's kind of where I go with that last one.
We've also heard from a couple of stakeholders, this notion of maybe it's not a full waiver, maybe it's something about the time at which you collect the SDCs. So for developers, affordable housing developers, you know, paying money upfront means they start to pay interest on that money. You know, if the city could help them, there's cost to the city to delaying collecting SDCs. But, and I think vesting, time investment of SDCs.
We recently had the discussion as pertains to small business and it's pretty much the same issue in terms of costs and timing.
You're familiar with it, yeah. So, thank you. You've gotten us right into the strategies. I'll just point out a couple of things about the sort of list that came to the top. They are very much in the building-focused category. Kim mentioned last time we talked about people-focused and building-focused. The task force had a bit of a conversation about that. And I think a lot of the task force members really felt like a lot of those people-focused strategies that you'll see in the longer list weren't maybe really appropriate for the city to take on. You know, tenant education programs, maybe that's better at the county or with a nonprofit or the state. Or is that really a city function that you all are ready to take on? Or are there others that can fill that? And then it's also, I think, the building focus is a little bit reflective of who we have around the table as well. It's, I mean, and planning commission, of course, that was the primary focus of our conversation with them. But not unusual for an equitable housing strategy for planning and development to be building-focused. And then Kim also mentioned, we are still doing some outreach, trying to make sure we're getting a little bit deeper into the community and make sure we're not missing folks, especially those who really could use some more affordable housing or greater security. So more ideas may come out of that. We might come back to you with another strategy that we haven't shown here and we'll talk to the task force about that if that happens. I don't know what that would be, but it's possible. So we're trying to keep an open mind about that. I don't think there was anything more I would add. The questions we have up here, we thought would be really helpful for discussion. Our path forward is to start really further developing these strategies for the final plan. And then the last question, as I mentioned before, we also need to start defining, how is it that you're going to be measuring progress? How you know that you're sort of hitting milestones or benchmarking along the way? So it'd be good to hear your ideas about what success looks like as well as, are these the right strategies? Is there something that just doesn't make sense for your policy objectives or your community? Is this the right, are these the right priorities for this time?
Our history has been that we've done tax abatement on multifamily in multiple different specific situations in town. And that has been going on for a period of time. I'm not sure how those units relate to the affordability distribution that I heard Councilor Lindvile may be asking that we have a little more information about. But I think that we need to look at that. I would remind the council, and I was surprised to read in the staff report, that community land trusts had not been widely promoted in the discussion that you'd had. And remind the council that the one project that we have done as a city is the apartment.
Creekside Woods, right?
Huh?
Right over there, Creekside Woods.
Creek.
No. Creekside, Creekside. I'm sorry. All right, Creekside.
That's what I thought you were saying.
So essentially, it's a land trust where the city owned the ground and did a long-term 100-year, 99-year, something lease with a nonprofit to help defray the cost of building that. And that has been the most directly involved, if you wish, the city has been in promoting an affordable housing product. It seems, from my viewpoint, like that has been a success. These, what, Chris, 10 years? Something like that, that we've done that. And so I would advocate that we should not summarily dismiss that as a strategy that might be used again in our city, though it did not seem to have come to the top in too many of your discussions.
Wasn't that the first one?
It's 2A.
It's 2A.
2A.
Well, or 1A, the.
Yeah, right. 1A is also similar in nature.
On the West property.
Yeah. Okay, Councilor West?
It has been an absolute joy to chair this task force. And I think the mayor makes an excellent point with the trust. And maybe we overlooked this because one of the biggest consensus is that acreage we have over by smart and affordable housing and density directly next to transit and services could also reduce parking requirements and meet a lot of the common goals. And it's really, we're so lucky that we have that potential opportunity there. But it sounds like that what the mayor just said regarding the trust, that might be a great little marriage and like, for the right property and that we own that as a city. And I know a lot of the task force has brought that specific issue up. And so I think that that might be a good thing to look at. And I would encourage the councillors to watch. I think the planning commission did an absolutely bang-up job on their discussion. I thought it was very thorough, thoughtful and in-depth. And so it's worth a watch. And so I couldn't make it to that, but I got a chance to watch it. And I would encourage you guys, it is really good to bring the additional perspective. And I think it encapsulates kind of what happened in the task force really well. And they all did a really great job talking to that.
Councilor Ackwell?
I do have one question about the objectives, one of the objectives. Number four is reduced risk of housing displacement. And I think that's a really important and valuable goal. But I noticed that there weren't that many strategies tied to it. And so I was just concerned or wanted to ask the question because I think it's important that we have objectives that we feel we have control over meeting, you know, especially to your point of what does success look like? And I wondered, do we have enough mechanisms, I guess, for that area that we can meet success? That was a question, really. I don't, I know that, I think the one piece that was tied to that was kind of like gathering together resources and things like that. And there was the Milwaukee example of their website. So I don't know, do we have feedback of how is that working for people? You know, it made me kind of pause and think, what would I Google if I was looking for help? Who would I go to first, too? Myself, you know? I wondered if there's more discussion to share on that point because I'm curious about some of the thoughts behind it.
I think too, just on a more technical side, I think 1B, advocate for the affordable housing bond projects and funding. And then also 1E, creating housing tax abatement programs to achieve, oh, sorry, I've expanded, but about tax abatement programs. Those could be used for preservation of housing or to make current housing, maybe it's an upgrade and then holding them at an affordable rate. It's not explicitly stated in here, but it could help get at housing displacement. But you make a good point.
Councilor West?
And I won't bore the council. I don't know if you guys have ever seen how tax abatement has been used for first-time home buyers or lower-income buyers. When I bought my first house in Portland, I don't know, I was like 22-years-old, but I bought a house in North Portland. It was kind of, they're an up-and-coming area, a new construction. And I only paid taxes for the, and I qualified for the program. I only paid property taxes for the first 10 years, but that directly came to me off of my bill, right? So for 10 years, I had a really small tax abatement. And that didn't go to a builder, it didn't go to a developer. It came directly to me, the taxpayer, to reduce my burden of monthly cost. And so I really filled those dollars every single month. And I know that was one type of tax abatement that we had talked about. One, it's so, you can be so creative with it, like what you had just talked about with restoring properties and making them more secure, but also really letting the homeowner feel it immediately, the monthly savings for the first 10 years of owning the property. They're only paying taxes on the land, not on the improvement on the land. And I think that for me, I directly benefited from that. And I think that I know it would really benefit people that could qualify for that type of savings.
And that kind of seems to me to go to the question of what is the threshold for homeownership that has kind of ratcheted up? And in my life experience, you know, you don't, I didn't start out at the top, I mean, you start out where you can get into something and it may not be anywhere near your ideal. But, you know, over time, then you hopefully can develop some equity and move up. And that ladder of being able to increase your equity and move up is what is so challenging, I think, for a lot of people to try to get into the market. So what can we do to lower the threshold in some meaningful way? And so it sounds like that experience that you had, Councilor West, you know, maybe goes to that sort of a question. I think we need to be thinking in terms of that kind of an approach. So, Councilor Lindvile?
I know that many of the strategies are not, they're not site-specific, but there are some that are site-specific. That's not easy to say. But I didn't see anywhere along in the strategies that Town Center was identified as a potential for where some of these strategies might come into play. And so I wondered about that in terms of mixed housing, both high-end and affordable housing, multifamily kinds of things. But we did talk about, I think Frog Pond's identified. And I think, you know, there are other areas that are specific. So I just throw that out as a suggestion, maybe, to see where those might fit.
The other thing that I did not seem mentioned, along things I didn't see mentioned, was the traditional, somewhat traditional role that urban renewal has played in acquiring property with which to then do some of these kinds of things. And we have used urban renewal effectively in this city in a couple of different iterations. And I would certainly want to recognize that that is a potential tool at the right place, time and method and that we should protect that possibility.
So to get back to the point about Town Center, I think we had these in mind, not being as geographically specific. One thing that comes to mind in terms of tax abatements would be something like vertical housing potentially would be something that, you know, gets at that kind of mixed-use, multifamily-type residential with a retail component. So, you know.
Without being site-specific?
Well, without, I think in our strategy, when we developed the plan itself, we'll have a little more ability to kind of flesh out where we want to apply these strategies. Because we know as a part of our grant agreement with Metro that we do need to be targeted and focused on Town Center and Frog Pond. So I think certainly articulating that as we go forward will be helpful.
And that might also go to the mayor's issue about code restrictions as well that may need to be reviewed to be able to.
And I think we'll have to take a look if that's a new strategy onto itself in terms of a code audit. We do have one in here that looks specifically at House Bill 2001 implementation and opportunities that are there. So whether, yeah, that might, whether or not those are separate items or not, we can look into and articulate.
So we're having some good discussion. We've used all but about five minutes. So how are we coming on your end?
I think, is there anything you need on what success looks like?
I think that would be nice to hear, yeah. Actually, we can help fill in the gaps of what we think some of the performance measures might be for this. But if any of you have additional thoughts on sort of, what does success look like in the future? And things that you can imagine, the city, knowing the sort of capacity and talent, great talent of your staff, what seems to be realistic kind of things you could track and measure and start showing progress?
Councilor West?
I guess that question in being a little bit more specific in it because it's a little bit general, what does success look like? Well, that's pretty broad. So we could get on all kinds of tangents with that question. But I think specifically, are you asking for us to really consider what does success look like within having the specific projects? Like, is it would be successful if we had this project in this type of place with serving this community? Is that what you think is success? Or is it we come back with 10 different ideas for the council to vote on that success for the task force? Or I guess, what do you think? How should we answer that and make it a little more narrow with that question?
I think where this is likely headed, and of course, I'm open to something else, but I think where we're going to. but I think where we're going to be headed with this is these strategies that we were talking about that are going to get prioritized, we're going to give you some indications of, indicators of progress. So I think they'll be tied to the strategies. It's probably fairly simple to imagine kind of measures of success for the West property redevelopment, but looking at, sorry, sort of tax abatement or something or housing resources, I mean, some of these are getting a little, to your point, they get sort of nebulous, like how would we kind of determine, you know, for housing resources, online one-stop-shop, would you just be calculating how many people seek your resources, how many, an uptick that the county reports on people from Wilsonville accessing services that the county has?
That doesn't feel really like a success. I mean, it's not bad, but it's not the ultimate goal. I mean, I'd like to see it, you know, in terms of units made available at certain economic levels that otherwise wouldn't be available now, whether that's a city-led project or a partnership with private sector or inducements to the private sector to do something they otherwise wouldn't have done. I'd like to see it on the ground or, you know, moving forward to be on the ground. Councilor West?
I think the mayor's right on to something there because he basically, in my, in how I would interpret it, and correct me if I'm wrong, they sound more like smart goals. So they're very specific and I think that our success has to be smart or it's too nebulous. So I need it to be time-sensitive and time-related. I need it to be very specific in how it's carried out with the certain plans because we only have finite dollars, finite resources, and finite time. And so if those aren't smart goals specifically, then I think that we are going to be a little, stick in this nebulous kind of dream world and not really get down to brass tacks to get the job done.
Yep. And know if you're off-track or on-track.
Yeah, exactly. Yeah.
Yeah. All the pretty words don't really get us there if they don't make something happen.
I think what we can do is take some initial thoughts with these strategies and when we come back with a draft plan, have a rough sketch for your feedback as to, you know, how we might be measuring it based on the strategies we have in the plan.
Councilor Lindell?
I just would make one suggestion and again, not having looked at the gaps, you know, those can drive exactly what those outcomes are. So if you have, and if there are no gaps, if the assessment is that it would really have a fairly stable, diverse housing, then I would say, what is the, what is the goal? Where does the council see the city being in 10 years in terms of increasing availability and diversity of housing? And so if we're flat right now and we're okay, then we have to have a goal that drives us to something that is measurable and it has to be policy-driven. So I guess maybe that would take some discussion to get to that place. Maybe the task force even could, could begin to have those discussions.
Yep.
And so I, as my takeaway from tonight, I'm not hearing from anybody that we should be removing anything from this list. Is that a correct assumption?
I'm not hearing that either.
Okay. Well, we will, based on your feedback, we'll explore whether to either supplement what we have or if any new strategies would be appropriate for including in the plan and then we will come back to you early next year with a draft plan.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
Thanks very much.
Thank you.
Okay. We're doing meeting at 7:30, so we've got three 20-minute items, we've got an hour, so we need to just keep moving through them, I guess. IGA Willamette Water Supply Systems, Willamette Water Supply System Commission and Toilet Valley Water District for Raw Water Facility Project. Couldn't you come up with longer names for this?
We're trying. Good evening. Dolore Kerber, Public Works Director, and Patty Nelson, City Engineer. All right. We're here this evening to chat with you a little bit about the Raw Water Facility Intergovernmental Agreement, the R-W-F-I-G.
Don't even try.
Anyway, so this has to do with the big 66-inch water line that the Willamette Water Supply Program is installing that is going from the Willamette River all the way up eventually to Sherwood and then from, to the treatment plant and then continuing on north. And previously, the city has signed several different agreements with the Willamette Water Supply Program and with those, we have gotten various compensations, up to $17 million in rent payment, they're doing some infrastructure improvements for us, a big-ticket item is they're doing some seismic upgrades to the riverbank in front of the water treatment plant that will also benefit us. And with that, then also, we are getting additional 5 million gallons per day capacity in our raw water pipeline, which will be helpful for us as we continue to grow. And then all of that, these improvements that are going in, the best part is we only have, the city only has to pay $125,000 for all of those improvements. So that was the first three agreements. And what we did agree to is once we got started on the Raw Water Facility Project, that as we went along, we would figure out what it looked like. And since that time, they're at 90% design drawings right now, so things have evolved and we are looking at having their pipeline go through our park or Willamette Water Treatment Plant Park or also known as Arrowhead Creek Park. And it has adjusted a little bit in locations, what they're doing has changed, so we had asked for some additional compensation. Now, one of the good things through the evolution of the design is at one point, they were going to have a lot of their facilities within the confines of our treatment plant, but now they've moved it to the upper site, which frees inside of our treatment plant for us for when we go for a 20-million-gallon upgrade project that Patty is working on. So that's the good news. And so what has happened is with that, we are getting a multitude of different elements of various compensation for this. What was interesting, very timely, literally 15 minutes before I wandered over here, Dave Craska, who is the, what is Dave's, he's the General Manager for the Willamette Water Supply Program, the other members of the Water Intake Facility Commission, a lot of acronyms. They had asked, what is the cost equivalent of all these compensations that we are getting as part of this IGA? They're a little curious about that. So he sent it over to me and the way he calculated it up for the, you know, the road-rated pedestrian path, the river view path, the overlook path, the lighting, et cetera, et cetera, is when you add in the cost of contractor markup and bonds and conditions, blah, 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 it's about $2.5 million worth of money. So, not bad, pretty good deal. But, so that's kind of overall, what it is overall. What I did want to share with you tonight is, and I'm trying to think, where is it? Is this even working? There we go. One up, this one? There were some questions the last time we met about this oversight, or overlook, I'm sorry. So currently, there's this wooden overlook that we have that gives people a view of the river, especially during the winter time, and that will need to be removed when they do the work in the park for the pipe as well as the installation of their pumps. And so what we have asked them to do, oh, let's see, how come we're not moving forward here? And so, we won't get into details, but just kind of, they try to make sure that whatever they did there would tie back to the existing water treatment plant. So this is somewhat their vision and goal of what it would be. And here's, here's what we're looking at. So the current overlook is here and there is a trail that goes, actually, there's a trail that goes, cuts over like this type of thing, okay? And what they're going to do is rebuild this area here for a better overlook. There is a volunteer trail that goes down here. They will actually build this into a real trail with steps as needed down to an overlook. And then there will be another trail that will be ADA accessible that will come out here, this does not exist today, come out here so somebody can have a nice view of the river at this location and go back. We will also, we've asked them to leave this volunteer trail here over to some historic cable trees. So this will be an unimproved trail, but people can still access that area. So this is kind of the overlook, general overlook of what's going in and these are just some ideas of what they're trying to take away. So here's what it would look like. So now where it's elevated, this will be at grade, coming out like this. And here's what it looks like today and this is what they believe it'll look like because there will be some thinning of the trees when they do some of the seismic work along the riverbank. So after two years, there will still be a little bit of a peek-a-boo view and then as time goes on, it'll continue to fill in, but it'll still have a nice little view there for people. And this is the West overlook, this is the ADA accessible overlook of how people can go and have a nice little bench to sit. And then this is the one that comes down the hillside, down to an overlook that, closer to the river. And that's the...
No bench down by the river?
No bench down by the river. Not at least this part of the river. So, it is kind of fun in that, in the detailed drawings, this here and this here, they're both 60 to 66-inch cylinders, one with a planter and one for sitting and then it'll, for people to better understand the size of the pipe that is underneath them. Give a sense of...
No window looking down?
No, no. We learned that the hard way to cover up those windows, so. All right. Any questions about the agreement?
Councilor Lindell?
I'm just wondering, this is a little bit, I think your comment about not having a bench down below, it doesn't look, I mean, that's where the real view of the river is going to be, at that lower overlook, is that not correct?
Yes, there will be actually bench. He was talking about a van down by the river. It's a SNL, right?
No, I was asking about a place to sit.
Oh, I'm sorry.
He was talking about his place to sit.
Well, you know...
It looks very, very modest in that...
Yes, that's what I was thinking.
In the detailed drawings though, that's a good point, there is a bench on the detailed drawings.
And it doesn't look very large, that, I mean, it doesn't, it looks like a couple or three people could stand there and look, but it, certainly it doesn't give the expansive look of what the upper overlook looks like.
Correct. Yes.
So if two parties of people, one's down there and you go down there, you have to wait your turn before you can stand, I mean, couldn't it be a little more than that?
We could probably ask them to make it larger if that is the desire of the council, yes.
The only obstacle I can see would be with permitting because a lot of the regulatory agencies, when you're down by the river, want to limit, you know, they want to have more of a natural vegetation, so...
Or in the green light.
Mm-hmm, right.
Councilor West?
I was curious about, we are giving more people, more access to the portion that was the unimproved or you guys called volunteer.
Get volunteer trails.
So, I mean, I don't, correct me if I'm wrong, or help me paint the picture, when I hear volunteer trail, it's like people just trucking down there when they really, certainly shouldn't have been, it just kind of, things stopped growing or they just kind of hacked with their own machetes. It seemed a little bit like we're giving access to cable trees, which we've prided ourselves on and Council Leahan has really promoted and shown the historical value of those trees. Why is that portion or why can't it be at least improved upon so we can highlight that historical part? And why would we give more people access to a volunteer trail? Is that safe? Is it...
So a volunteer trail is just, people will just trample over the vegetation and create a trail over time. It was never meant to be a real trail. We talked about that, the grades are such in here that we cannot get a reasonable grade to construct a valid trail. And so we are concerned about that and we just ask then, just leave the trail as is and do nothing. In fact, there's this other trail that goes like straight up the hillside. We're specifically going to have them eradicate that and replant it so people stop using it.
Is that trail safe though? If you, if we can't even make it safe enough for somebody to walk down for the city, is it safe to even keep also?
We're not encouraging them, we're not telling them, we're just leaving it as is.
Is there viability to that? Because we give more access to it and we create around it and we don't get...
There's nothing to stop somebody from coming here and creating a volunteer trail that way. I mean, so people could make all sorts of volunteer trails all over this area.
And there's an existing access down there right now.
So to get to the legal question is, is as a city, we have, in any of our parks, we have discretionary immunity and that's, and we're, and the law had a little blip in Portland, but it's been fixed and so it's kind of a use at your own risk as long as you're not being charged. That being said, you don't want to create something that's an obvious attractive nuisance either, but the city does have that protection and so you're certainly not going to want to advertise the trail. But if you leave it there and people of their own volition want to go there, then you should be, you should be fine as long as it's clear that that's not a maintained trail.
Okay.
Good question.
Other questions? This is the item that's on the consent agenda that has been suggested that we pull it off if people want to have a little more discussion or want to explain it a little bit to the public on camera in the meeting as to what's going on or why. I'll leave it to the council if anybody wants to make that request, they may do so.
One more clarifying question.
Yes?
That, the walkway that's existing, so there's still going to be a walkway, but it's going to be that level grade, that wood one as it stands is gone. What makes, I'm just curious, construction-wise, because that's elevated, so you can see, it's like kind of, it's like kind of pendulum, like over the canyon or, not canyon, the hillside a little bit?
The current one will not go much further than this at grade one. The reason that we are not having it elevated is we need to be able to access across it to get to the plants.
Okay, is a current one longer?
Not necessarily.
Okay.
It just climbs in elevation.
Okay.
And we were unable to do that to be able to cross here. I mean, you would have to really have it super high.
Be like a, yeah.
I mean, you'd have to start back here to grade it up to be high enough to get a truck on.
But you could cantilever it out on the end for a little more view if we wanted to do a little more construction, right?
Well, we have asked them to push it out further than it was previously, but there's a retaining wall that we have there. One of the options was to do more like a deck, but the problem with that is it creates more maintenance hassles. So instead, what we did is we had them push it out further and it, there's a retaining wall down in here to give us further out into the area, so.
Okay, sounds like you've thought it through.
So.
All right.
All right.
Sounds good, thank you. Washington County FD20 zoning as it relates to contractors' establishments.
Good evening, Mayor Knapp, councilors. My name is Miranda Bates Schell, Planning Director with the city, and I am here mostly just because of my extensive experience with the Basalt Creek Concept Planning Process and I am here to help answer any questions that you might have. But Cindy Alexoy, Associate Planner with the city, is going to lead the presentation and discussion.
Good evening, everyone. So I'm here tonight to present some information about Washington County Future Development 20-Acre District Zoning specifically related to the Coffee Creek and Basalt Creek industrial areas and related to also contractors' establishments. And we're seeking direction from council on three key questions about this topic that address the council's interest in the issue as well as what level of effort the council would like staff to spend on either elevating the discussion to Washington County's 2020 Work Program or further researching some city-led options. So to provide a little bit of background, Coffee Creek and Basalt Creek industrial areas are in the northwest part of the city. On this slide, the blue is the Coffee Creek and purple is the Salt Creek. And both of these were brought into the urban growth boundary in 2002 and 2004 and zoned FD20 by Washington County. The FD20 district zoning is intended to protect and retain land on an interim basis until planning is complete and there's a clear path for transition to urban development. And the zoning district allows contractors establish- to urban development. And the zoning district allows contractors' establishments. And some examples of this type of business might be a branch office of a builder, or the shop of a special trade contractor, like a plumber or landscaper, or a subsidiary of a manufacturing company involved in construction. And these businesses pose a challenge for future urban industrial development in the industrial areas for several reasons. So contractors' establishments are, they use county services, and they tend to have a low improvement value. They occupy a lot of land, and they don't really contribute significantly to the tax base. They are also difficult to convert to urban levels of development. And it makes it challenging for the city to realize our vision for those areas as thriving, a thriving business district with good job opportunities and higher tax value, as well as a higher level of development. And I included a couple of pictures to sort of illustrate what these look like. So this is one out on Clay Street. On the left is the street view, and on the right, you can see an aerial perspective of it. And then this is a more recent one that is out on Day Road. And again, the entrance on the left and aerial on the right. The city, or we've commented on five different development applications for contractors' establishments out in this area since 2014. And the most recent one was on Garden Acres Road. And because of the limited nature of the development that was proposed, Washington County did not require right-of-way dedication to the city as a condition of approval for that application. The other four are in Basalt Creek, and on Clay Street, and Day Road. And just on a related, little bit tangential matter, with FD 20 zoning, it's worth mentioning that Washington County right now is updating their community development code for small wireless facilities, and in the right-of-way and on private property. And this affects all zoning districts, including FD 20. So that could present additional conflicts in these areas if those small wireless facilities are allowed in the right-of-way in Basalt Creek and Coffee Creek, and that would likely conflict with the city's standards that were recently adopted earlier this year with the design guidelines. So I just kind of throw that out there as an additional issue with FD 20. So we've looked at several different policy options that could address the concern with contractors' establishment, and encourage industrial development that's more consistent with the city's vision. And four of those are county policy amendment options, and three of them are county, or are city-led. And so the four Washington County options would be one that focuses on more stringent enforcement of the urban planning area agreement, to require applicants to include an enforceable plan for future, to transition to future redevelopment more consistent with our plans. Two of the options would amend the FD 20 district standards, one to remove contractors' establishments as an allowed use, or to require applications to include an enforceable plan for redevelopment when they're annexed to the city. The fourth option would amend the urban planning area agreement to define a city coordination area, and this would require applicants to coordinate with the city on service provision and annexation procedures well in advance of submitting an application. And for any of these options, the city staff would coordinate with county staff to propose a 2020 work program item to the Board of County Commissioners that would address the issues. With the city-led options, whoops, we're not there yet, sorry. The city-led options would include one that would annex land, zoned FD 20, and apply the city's holding zone designation until the land develops consistent with the city's plans. Another would focus on commenting on type 3 development applications for contractors' establishments, to require the applicant to provide findings that the proposed development serves the public interest on the proposed site at the proposed time, which is a criteria in the county's code. And then the third option would be to purchase key properties in the Coffee Creek and Basalt Creek areas to ensure that they're not developed as contractors' establishments. And staff could explore one or more of those ideas and come back to a future meeting with additional information. So the issues for discussion, or the questions are, you know, is this an issue that council would like staff to pursue? Or is it not an issue, and we just don't look at it anymore? Does the council want staff to work on any of the Washington County policy options that we've raised, and elevate the issue to the work program for 2020? Or is council interested in one or more of the city-led policy options? And if so, which ones, and how would you like staff to work on those? So with that, I would open it for discussion.
Okay. Four months ago or so, I had lunch with Catherine Harrington, Washington County Chair. I raised this question with her, and her answer was short but succinct, essentially, "So annex it."
Right.
She did not seem to have a lot of in-depth policy discussion interests to me at that point, but maybe other things have happened, or maybe other county commissioners might inject some different elements into that conversation. I don't know. I just put that out there as my only real recent interaction. So that leads me to think that our most likely approach may be to do one or more of the things that are within our control, and not bank on the county doing something, though we have been good partners with the county in a lot of ways. And I would think that if they could come to understand that this is a critical piece of making Coffee Creek and Basalt Creek develop with a high-value kind of a, of a program, which obviously benefits the county as well as the city, that maybe they should do something different. I don't know. Has staff had any discussions that leads them to think that that avenue might be productive?
Staff have raised this issue, and we've had conversations with staff over at the county about it. They understand the issues that we've had, and that it kind of keeps showing up in different ways on these applications for the contractors' establishments. And then we just raised it with the wireless ordinance. So there's reception from the staff, but they have a process, and their process really is for us to submit, if there are local jurisdictions within the county who have issues, is that we submit to them a letter with the issue outlined, what our concern is, what we'd like elevated to the work program of the board. And then that information is discussed between staff and the board in November and December of the calendar year, in advance of their work program, which begins in the spring. So that is lining up with this conversation, and that's why...
The window is upon us.
The window is upon us, and so, yeah, it is timely.
Councilor Leahan?
So with most of these roads that are currently out in the county, I presume the county owns those roads?
There's a mixture in the Basalt Creek and Coffee Creek areas.
We own Day Road, I presume.
Correct. And we just annexed Garden Acres. But there's a mix, so Boone's Ferry, Basalt Creek Parkway, Graham's Ferry. There's a portion of Graham's Ferry, actually, that near the, adjacent to the prison, that is city right-of-way. So there's a, there's a mix.
Okay. So, so we, do we usually have negotiated settlement before we take the road, right?
Correct. That's my understanding.
So has there been any discussion about Graham's Ferry?
Not that I'm aware of.
Would that fall under the approach of specialized strategic acquisitions, annexation?
It's like every week.
Four times we have crashed into that bridge with big trucks.
It's like every week.
This, this year alone. That road is getting taller.
As they repave it.
As they repave it. So I don't know how they are not coming back at Washington County now. That used to be 12-8, and then it was 12-6, and now it's 12-3.
12-3, yeah.
And, and clearly, most of the trucks, or a lot of the trucks that go under there, or at least their trailers, are less than, are more than 12-3. And so that, it would seem to me that that is a road that needs work, needs work. It needs to go down. It's got to be excavated.
The railroad will not allow excavation below the original elevation, is what I understand, because they're worried about undermining the footings.
Well, I, and I appreciate that, but the road keeps coming up.
It's not where it was, yeah.
It's getting shorter, shorter.
So, Councilor...
I'm pretty sure the railroad bridge is not coming down, it's a road.
Councilor Lindbergh?
Well, I had a question about the second item under the Washington County policy amendment options. And I was wondering if it would be possible, is there any possibility that Washington County would accept a request from us to amend the FD 20 district standards to remove contractor establishment in those particular areas only?
That's a good question.
Yeah.
Other approach, just kind of brainstorming, I wonder, you know, is there any mechanism that would cause, that could be negotiated in an IGA to cause a development application in Washington County within those areas to require an annexation? That they would not issue development permits in Coffee Creek, Basalt Creek, that an application would have to include a city annexation application? Is that feasible?
Wow.
I don't, I'm...
Wow.
And that would allow us to apply our standards, and it would be understood that any application would have to meet those standards. I'm just, I don't know.
Councilor West?
There's some, two really creative ideas. You spoke with the one commissioner, do we...
Chair.
Chair, sorry, the chair.
Yeah.
Do any of the other commissioners potentially more, are, is there more than one? Are they potentially more sympathetic? Is it a good time to reach out and have a few more lunches? Or do you think, I just, I mean, it just sounds, I don't know, like if we have the ability to kind of grease that wheel a little bit, or...
There's always the chance to try to do something like that, though the policy window, they have this time window, when they've decided they're going to set their work plan for the coming year, and only those things that get agreed upon at the front end are going to get worked on this year, so...
And her answer was the most extreme of all the options.
Seems like it.
The most controversial, and the most, you just could do that. Oh, thank you. How nice for you.
You know, but, but you could make a cogent argument that someone proposing to develop there is proposing to better themselves, and, and, you know, make improvements and whatnot. And to tie that to the long-term future plans for that area has some logic to it. Now, legally, I don't know where we end up with that, but you have multiple scenarios around the region where urban-level development has crept into areas and been allowed to proceed. Just one little decision at a time, and before you know it, you have Clackamas Town Center that is sitting on rural land. It's not urban, and it's never, they're never going to agree at this point to become urban. I mean, isn't that a process we want to avoid with all the effort we're putting into Coffee Creek and Basalt Creek? So we may have to take a stand on the front end in order to not start creeping down that pathway. The same is true in multiple other areas around...
The region.
The region. And, and it's just not a scenario that gets us to where we've been thinking about the potential for employment and, and value in these industrial employment lands that have been identified. Councilor Lindbergh?
Is the long-term plan to annex at some point that entire area anyway? And what would be the negative implications to annexation at this point?
Current owners, current owners' taxes would go up.
Yeah.
That's the other thing, tying it to a development application, is, you know, they're already understanding it's not, they're not going to have a status quo, they're going to do a development. Okay, so their taxes will go up because they're developing. So it encourages them to develop something that really pays its way, you know, in a more robust way than just a, you know, minimum value kind of a thing. And so it would deter minimum value proposals. How far out on a limb am I here?
[laughing]
Councilor Echol.
I wondered, like, history lesson for me, why was a contractor's establishment originally permitted as a special use? Do we know? I was like, you know, why was that, it sounds almost like it was encouraged, like, hey, here's a great spot for this. Why was that originally?
Where do you want them to be? Everybody's got to store their trackhoe somewhere, their truck, their, you know, whatnot, their miscellaneous stuff, if they're going to be in business, you know. So where do they want to be? They want to be near the metro area where the most of the jobs are, but they want low-value land, so it doesn't cost them that much to do it.
Well, I understand why it works for the contractor's establishment, but I'm, why did it work for the county? I guess...
Without having, without having been in the room when Washington County made that decision, I don't know the answer. But I would imagine that part of it has to do with, typically, I think, I think the idea behind this is that it can be a transitional use or temporary use, in the sense that you've got some development activity, it's occurring, they're there, they're storing things, but it is a low enough value that you could see redevelopment when there's interest in redeveloping an area or developing an area. But, because it doesn't have a really high-low, or ratio in terms of the improvement value, so you can actually get more value out of the land by redeveloping it.
Right, so it's kind of like banking it.
Right. But that's the thing, is that it does actually create this incentive to bank it, to some degree.
Exactly.
Particularly when you're in a market that has a lot of development in the surrounding area, because you are making money by having that contractor's establishment there. So I don't, I think that it's one of those, it's a, there was some intent probably there that it would be seen as temporary, but what we're seeing is that they often aren't that temporary.
Right.
I mean, yes, maybe in 20, 30 years, that won't, that won't be there, but I think that's outside of the horizon of what people are hoping for in terms of the Coffee Creek and Basalt Creek planning areas.
And the framework has changed.
Right.
Very much so. The other question I had is that, the part about how we could submit, does this serve, what is the thing, if this is, the public interest is served by this? So that, to me, feels so subjective.
Yeah.
Right? And, I mean, I wouldn't want to be on the other side of, like, having to make that subject, you know? I wonder what the interest for anybody is to be put in that situation of having to operate in this very subjective framework.
There are, according to your photo essay here, multiple of these already there that we're going to have to deal with. Seems to me our objective should be to not get further down that road. Okay, they're there, but let's not have more of them. I mean, how do we approach it so we do not continue to allow things that, that are going to be detrimental, or at least not up to our vision of what we want to try to attract to that area? Councilor Leahan?
What is the zoning? Is it rural and industrial?
Well, it's FD 20.
It's FD 20.
Oh, it's FD 20.
Future Development 20 area.
Oh, oh, okay.
And it stays that until we...
And it stays that until we annex.
And Washington County just invented that?
Yeah.
It's their whole thing.
It's their whole thing, yeah.
But, I mean, nobody else has that.
Not that I'm aware of.
So, yes.
Councilor Lindell.
Well, I, that's why I think it would be difficult now, because the contractor establishments are permitted within that zoning. So it would be, it would be difficult for Washington County to turn someone down, should they come forward when it's permitted.
Yeah.
And so unless we can get them to agree to not allow that within that particular area, and we could get the staff to work with their staff, I, I think our only option is to move forward with annexation. I don't see any other way to, unless we are able to do your option where it's piece by piece. But in the meantime, Washington County could still be putting them in, in places where there were not requests for development.
Someone would have to make an application to put another, a new yard in, right?
It goes through a development application process with the county.
I'm saying that, that that would trigger, you know, what I was saying.
Okay.
Councilor West.
It's, I guess there is, there's two things, is working to try to stop additional hurdles from being implemented, and I think we all see that. Where are these business owners and contractor groups? Where are they at right now? And is there any ability for us to collaborate with them, for them to see the benefit of the change? Now, I don't know how much cheap land exists in the metro area right next to the freeway for all their track hoes. I don't have any, none. So, the answer is none, just for it. But what's in it for them? If it's nothing, then you're, I mean, this is, annexation is, I mean, it can get, I mean, I think it's going to become, it's just not like, hey, let's just annex it. Like, that's also, is there a way, though, that we, any ideas on the collaborating with these business owners who are here, taking up large swaths of land? And if it's supposed to be temporary, can that be enforced? Like, listen, this is temporary, and it was temporary. I'm sorry, you've been there for X number of years, but it is temporary, and the zoning is changing, or that, this is changing. I, I don't know how that looks like legally either, but.
See, the long-term opportunity is for the owner to develop it into something higher value when something across the street is developed as higher value, and all of a sudden they're looking at a, at an opportunity, and that we're investing in a street down through the middle of there to make that a possibility. But, you know, the problem that we had right out of the box is somebody wants to take advantage of the city's investment but not participate.
Right, yeah.
So I, I think the goal really needs to be that we don't get further behind the curve, that we try to develop some kind of a program, either through a negotiated change in county code or a IGA that, that would enable us to push it toward the, the concept that we've had for that area. When, at least when somebody is proposing to develop or to, you know, comes in for a permit to do something, that that would trigger something beyond just the county applying their broad rule that they use all across the county.
Councilor West.
Isn't the sale, though, as you say to these, these guys, is, listen, like, yeah, for storing your, your construction equipment and all that here, but when this develops, this land that you are now on and own becomes this much more valuable, and you can develop it, and it's much more valuable to you and your company that way, isn't it selling that kind of vision to them? Would that be helpful for them to be good partners?
Yeah, but you can't convince everybody.
Trying to make everybody happy.
They're sitting on a good thing, and, and they're just, you know, not everybody is proposing to develop within their foreseeable time horizon, and they don't have the money there, the foresight or the infrastructure to go ahead and try to do something. You know, someday, somebody will walk in and offer them money that they'll want to have, you know, for that after it becomes worth more, but is that in five years or 10 years or 30 years? I mean, who knows?
There's a handful of them, but what if they got on the same page with the redevelopment and saw the value for them? And, because Basalt Creek's not happening tomorrow. I mean, it's, it's, it's a goal happening soon, but saying, hey, partner with the city, and this is what you could, would benefit from, and get them to see it greater than what they have now, and maybe, I don't know how much we've reached out to, I'm just trying to find a way, because I don't want to be antithetical to the, to the different entities involved, and trying to find a way that it's more collaborative, and maybe it's a pie in the sky, but if we could get a number of them to be like, yeah, I'm buying into Basalt Creek, I'm buying into that vision, so let's work together to make that happen, and helping them transition might be better than just we're annexing you, tough luck. And, because we're all trying to avoid that in a way, even that's what we've been told to do by the, you know.
Councilor Leahy.
The example we have here is, is Wilsonville Concrete, you know? They're, and, and they're right in the middle of the city, and they are in no rush. Clearly, they've committed to another five years of agriculture on Wilsonville Road, because they're making a lot of money in the rock business, and they don't, and they don't want to develop that. It's all, isn't it, it's a multifamily?
Yeah, it is.
Comprehensive plan, it's multifamily. Now, you could certainly make a case to them, which I'm sure they still already realize, that, that multifamily is worth a whole lot more than little nursery plants. But, but no, they want it for what they have it for, which is a buffer for their operation, which is very obnoxious for its neighbors. And these guys are probably in the same boat. They, they're making money in the business they're in, and they're not in a hurry to get into another business that they're not in.
It's really tough, and, and you're out of time, too, but, but I know a large developer has gone out and talked to some of these contractor establishments to buy the land to sort of see if they could amass enough to do some industrial development in the new Basalt Creek, Coffee Creek. And they've come back and said, we can't buy the land for the price they want for it, because it's, even though they're little, not very fancy operations, they make a lot of money.
They make a lot of money.
And so that's the issue. It's, once they get started and they're successful at what they do, they've got a little niche, and then the large industrial developers can't pay the price they want for the land, so you're in this catch-22.
So, so I think that they're there, and our goal needs to be not to have more of this stuff there, and we've got to develop policies that enable us to have some more control and to push when development is ready to happen.
So I heard a resounding yes to question number one.
Yes.
Which means we will meet with Washington County staff further to talk about some of these ideas, particularly the more creative ones, and we will definitely submit something to see if we can get on their work plan for whichever solution. And then we will also do some more research on annexation and what that question would look like, and we can bring that information back to the council.
Sounds good. I wanted to say, I thought your, what kind of white paper attached to this was very helpful in understanding the complexities and the details. Appreciate it.
Great job, Cindy.
All right. We've got one more thing to try to get through here, which is Basalt Creek Parkway Extension.
Wonderful. So I'll just introduce Renes Kelpins. He is the project manager for the extension project with Washington County. He's going to give the presentation this evening and lead the conversation.
Good evening. As she said, my name's Renes. I'm the project manager for the Basalt Creek Parkway Extension, so I wanted to go through a few slides and then open up for questions. So jumping in, funding, this is a federally funded project. We have secured $7.9 million in funding so far, three from the Mr., the county's Mr. Program. We are currently unfunded for construction. We have applied for a federal build grant. We applied for that back in June. So a brief history on the project, this came about from the Basalt Creek Transportation Refinement Plan, which identified three new arterials, Basalt Creek Parkway being one of them. We, during the refinement plan, they analyzed four, or sorry, five alternatives, one being that you see up there, expanding the existing facilities, and then three other alignments. The preferred alignment that was selected by the different agencies was the east-west connector that went from Tonquin to Graham's to Boones'. So right now, the project, what we're tasked with is we're trying to refine that alignment from Graham's Ferry Road to Boones Ferry Road. We took a look at three different concepts. We presented some criteria to the public at an open house back in June. We sent the criteria out to the cities for their thoughts, and sitting with the state, we went through them, and we came to a conclusion that right now, alignment B is our preferred option. Certain criteria we thought would elevate, different alignments ended up being very similar between the three. Alignment B stood out because it was the one that had no business relocations and had the lowest estimated cost. With Cameron came to the bridge, alignment B was $2 million less than alignment A and $1 million less than alignment C. Other impact that we really took into consideration was the impact of the Carlin School. That's why on all three alignments, you saw the jog to the north. The Carlin School, we've submitted to the state historical preservation office. We do have a negative impact for setting on the school. The school is not physically impacted. The road will sit by 10 feet below the school. We will have a small retaining wall in front of the school there. And then next steps, we do have an open house this week. We will present the preferred alignment to the public, solicit for more input from them, and we'll also have information regarding the Carlin School and our sub, sub consultants there to discuss that. We're moving into the design acceptance package, about 30% design level, hoping to deliver that in September next year, and we should hear back from the grant application here in November. With that, were there any questions, any slides I'd like, you'd like to go back to?
Counsel, any questions? You know, all were there, but I remember when we started on the, the transportation plan, what's it called for there?
The Transportation Refinement Plan?
Ah, the Transportation Refinement Plan, which they advised us at the outset, oh, 90 days, we'll knock this out, you know? That was how many years?
I think it was a two-year process.
Yeah, right.
2011 to 2013.
But it eventually was a consensus of all the stakeholders as to what needed to be done. The idea of extending on over to Boones Ferry is an important piece of that plan to allow transportation options and hopefully get some of the heavier traffic off of the Day Road piece, though we'll have to see how that goes. Ultimately, the long-term plan is to enable a connection on across I-5 without a, without a interchange, but to cross I-5 and come out somewhere up behind Mercedes and to loop around and come down into Elexon Road, where currently Canyon Creek Road comes from the south up to Elexon and stops. It's kind of challenging terrain there, but that is the concept, to allow movement back and forth across the freeway for people not getting on the freeway. Now, that's probably another 20-plus, 30 years, maybe, in the future.
At least.
Talk about that piece, but preserving the ability to do that was a big, important consideration in the refinement plan. So all of these seem to accomplish that, from what I can see. There's variations in the extent to which they hit Green Hill and Green Hill's current location, or have to be bent around to, to work with Green Hill. And Green Hill goes from Boones Ferry on over toward the freeway and would be existing right away for that eventual one. So, costs are a consideration, both, all three ones are going to displace two residents, is that correct?
Correct.
And so they're going to have to be bought out. You've got some limited business interference, interruption kind of thing. There was a lot of discussion about impacts to the natural resource area, the Basalt Canyon, and the early-on objective of having the shortest route that would, I mean, go over the narrow part of the canyon, so you're not impacting more of that natural area, was something that a lot of people acknowledged. I don't know if that's still a topic of discussion in your open houses, and-
That still comes up. But with alignment B, we definitely feel we have reached that what we called in the refinement plan as a sweet spot, that this is the narrowest route we found.
Timetables?
If we get the construction funding, hopefully, I think it was, I'm making a shock with the right dates here, we should maybe begin construction winter of 2021 if we secure construction funding.
And you don't know how you're stacking up on the federal level yet, because nobody knows.
No. Not showing that effort yet, so.
Yeah. I don't hear anybody pushing back too hard, you know? It's been through a lot of process. I mean, it really has been through a lot of process to, you know, sort of find its way to this point. Well, if you don't have any questions for the man, well-
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks very much.
Thank you.
Good luck with it.
Terrible idea, but it's not his fault.
Yeah. All right. So we're good for our work session?
We're good for work session.
We're good for work session. All right. Why don't we call adjournment at 7:22, and we're due downstairs in eight minutes.